I'm going to call to order this meeting February 1st, 2018, Nashua City Planning Board. Ms. Secretary, can you call the roll?
Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson.
Present.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Scott Leclerc.
Here.
Ed Weber.
Here.
Steve DuCrane. David Tenzel.
Here.
Mary Ann Mazzalagola.
Melissi Golia, present.
Melissi. I heard that it was Melissa. Melissi Gola. That's what I heard. But yes, you're here. Dan Kelly.
Here.
Dave Robbins.
Present.
Jerry Rupucci.
Here.
Maggie Harper.
Here.
That's it.
That's it? Okay. Oh, we have one more here, Ed.
Steve DuCrane.
Thank you. Present.
Okay, presently, we have all our regular members here, so Maggie, you'll be participating in discussion, not voting at this time. We have in front of us two sets of minutes. One is from the January 11th annual meeting and the second from the January 11th Planning Board meeting. If anybody had a chance to review them and somebody want to make a motion, we probably need independent motions on each.
As to the, I guess we'll start with the regular meeting minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
So, a motion to approve from Mr. Varley, a second from Mr. Rupucci. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? No? Okay, so that passes. That was for the Planning Board, right? So.
Yes.
How about for the annual meeting? A motion for that?
Make a motion to approve.
Give me a motion to approve from Mr. Varley.
Second.
Second from Mr. Robbins. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. All right. Communications, Roger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of Planning Board. In your packet, you had two communications. One was a financial fact sheet prepared. You were sent via email from Dan Kelly. And another one was just an article from Public Management Magazine called "Just a Ticket." Just background information on performing arts. That's all I have.
That's it? All right. Thanks. Any report of Chairman, Committee, or Liaison? Dan?
Yes, Capital Improvement Committee. Now, the process of reviewing Department Division Authority capital requests was completed Monday, the 29th. This year, guidance was given by the mayor on his priorities and the CIC committee requested and received each organization's singular priority, justification for the project's priority, and some input on how they felt it could be paid for through bonding or public-private partnership taxes, whatever. Each organization also proposed additional projects they felt required consideration as well. All the projects are ranked and the results will be tabulated and a report generated for the Planning Board's review before submission to the mayor and the Board of Aldermen on projects which should be given serious consideration for funding. The CIC report should be available by the end of February.
Thanks. Ed, anything?
The HDC had a meeting on this last Monday for a signage on Main Street. I was down in Orlando. I couldn't be there.
All right. Nothing to report, then?
Nothing to report.
Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and move into the meeting here. I'm going to, I guess we just have folks that are going to speak from the city here tonight, right? So.
Correct.
Okay. So with that being said, I'm going to, I'm going to wave reading the procedure of the meeting. Does anybody have an issue with that? Okay, thanks. So I'm going to move down. Old business conditional special use permits, none. Old business subdivision plans, none. Old business site plans. We have case number one, which is still tabled to an uncertain date. That's, so that one's not going to be here heard tonight. New business conditional special use permits, none. New business subdivision plans, none. New business site plans, case number two. Again, that one's postponed currently at this point to the March 29th meeting. Next, we have other business, case number one, review of tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. Anybody had a chance to take a look at that tentative agenda and want to make a motion on it?
Like to find out.
Mr. Chairman? I did read it and I find nothing of any regional impact.
Okay. So we have a motion from Mr. Kelly, there's nothing on the tentative agenda of regional impact. Do you have a second? Second from Mr. Rupucci. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Next, on the agenda, we have other business, case number two, referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed R-18-002 authorizing the purchase of land and buildings at 201 Main Street for the Performing Arts Center. I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself from this discussion. I have an interest in it, so I'm going to pass over to Adam. And since I'm a regular member, leaving, then Maggie, you'll end up being a voting member for this part of the referral.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. I understand Mr. Cummings is here, join us this evening and would like to speak on the proposal? Absolutely.
Tabled item?
Yeah, we have to take it off the table. Can I have a motion to remove this item from the table?
So move.
Motion from Mr. Robbins, is there a second? Second by Mr. Kelly? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the committee for the record. My name's Tim Cummings, I'm the Director of Economic Development for the city. Here before you tonight to ask for your favorable support of a resolution before you looking, where the city's looking to procure 201 Main Street. What I've done is I put together a couple slides, which I would like to briefly go through and then take questions. Essentially, this is a new slide deck that I put together specifically for tonight's conversation. I believe in preparation for this evening's meeting, you have seen or have had access to other documentation that go into much, much greater detail. So first, what's our role in this process? Per the Nashua Charter, Section 77F, the Planning Board shall review and make recommendations to the mayor and the Board of Aldermen on all locations for proposed municipal buildings and facilities, including educational, on the purchase and sale of any land by the city and on existing or dedicated streets to be discontinued or vacated. And this is obviously all in context to the, to the master plan. So first, Nashua Downtown Master Plan, which was done in May of 2003, I pulled this out. It specifically says on page 31, "The market study concluded that there is a need for better quality space to serve the existing performing arts market in the city. Currently, Nashua area performances and arts groups are using several local facilities scattered around the city. In addition, there is a potential for a downtown performing arts center to compete for a regional performing arts market that is not currently attracted to the area. The study recommended a new 500-seat arts facility in downtown Nashua to be developed in the short term to meet the needs of arts groups and attracting smaller audiences." The plan does go on to articulate a couple of various areas in the city. Court Street and the riverfront, both were actually studied in our more up-to-date feasibility plan that was most recently conducted. And I'll go into more details as to why those might not be as good of options as currently being discussed with 201 Main Street later on. So additionally, in the Nashua Arts Center feasibility study that the city conducted back in March of 2002, it said specifically, "Downtown is the best location in Nashua for a performing arts center facility in terms of the potential for funding, economic impact, and overall sense of improving the city's civic identity." And I must say, all those sentiments are still true today. So here we are today. The city, over a two-year period, did an analysis, a feasibility study, which concluded back in May, where ultimately, the consultants recommended 201 Main Street. And how did we get there? So how did we get there? We looked at some various sites in the downtown that actually could accommodate between 500 and 700 seats as the prior documentation will indicate to you that that's the spec that we should be working toward. And obviously, to do that, we know that we needed to have a minimum square footage. So sites that were, you know, available, that we thought we might be able to look at was a parking lot on Pearson Avenue. We looked at the Court Street Theater. We looked at the Spring Street Lot. We looked at Alec Shoes. And we also looked at the parking lot on Water Street that would have some riverfront access. Selection criteria, we wanted to make sure we made parking a priority. We also wanted to make sure it had great visibility to Main Street and proximity to retail. We also needed to make sure we had the adequate footprint necessary to have the performing arts center as articulated in the feasibility study. And of course, it goes without saying, it needed to be financially viable. So as you'll see, Spring Street was a 17,000 footprint, 14,500 for Main Street. Court Street's 13,000, Water Street's 11,000. Indian Head Bank was 8,000. Right off the bat, a couple of those sites just had to get ruled out because they wouldn't work. So then we really focused on Spring Street, Court Street, and Main Street. Keeping all the same variables in mind, we moved towards the preferred development site, which was 201 Main Street. And that was driven by cost. The main item is the Court Street Theater. For about the same amount of money, we would only have 250 seats, as opposed to potentially, you know, 600 to 700 seats. And then Spring, the Spring Street Parking Lot, that's new construction. You know, instead of looking at a $15.5 million bond, the city would be looking at a bond upwards north of $25 million. So those were the, those were the priorities that drove the conversation. Ultimately, the group of stakeholders making this recommendation to the Board of Aldermen believed that 201 Main Street was the best bang for the buck, delivering on all the variables as articulated. Access to parking, visibility on Main Street, proximity to retail, and adequate footprint. So why are we doing this? Very simply, if you look at the second bullet, if we put aside all the professional economic impact projections and we just break it down by this simple formula, if we take two performances a week over a year in a 700-seat theater, but we only say they're occupied 80% of the time, or 560 seats, and we only assess maybe 50% of those actually going out and spending money on Main Street, and we suggest that they only spend, on average, $30, that translates into a positive economic impact of just under $1 million, or 874,000. If we increase that by just one additional show, or performance, or some sort of generator of foot traffic, we would be seeing northwards of 1.3 million in positive economic impact. This is, this is a good reason why we would be pursuing this endeavor. But lastly, relative to downtown, and just to keep my comments very simple, the idea of using your downtown for an arts and culture center is not a new idea. This is a tried and true strategy. And it's a fairly common, understated principle now in how we redevelop our downtowns as all these differing expert books tell us. So with that being said, happy to take any questions.
Could you go back to the slide that had the numbers on it?
Sure.
Go up to one, one more.
One more?
No, go the other way, one more. Right there.
Yep.
Okay, so that number, that $873,000, $873,000, that's what you project the economic benefit to be for a year? For a calendar year?
Correct. Potentially. That's right. There's some assumptions in there, but it's a conservative projection.
Okay. I guess, just to be clear, that, the idea is that that money will be spent in private businesses in the city. It's not the city, the city of Nashua is not going to benefit by that number. The economy of the business community may, but that's not that money coming into the city.
Well, sir, I would humbly suggest that we would be the beneficiary at some point by the creation of a new job.
Yeah, I mean, you can be abstract that way, but what I'm saying is that number goes into the community. It's not money coming into the city of Nashua directly.
No, that's, that's correct. That's, but that-
And if Alec Shoes pays $50,000 a year, if, if Alec Shoes pays $50,000 in taxes.
Yep.
That money is directly out of the Nashua pocketbook. You see what I'm saying? So there's like, to look at this, I'm not saying this, that I'm not in favor of this, and I'm not saying this isn't helpful. I'm just saying that number doesn't represent money coming into the city of Nashua coffers. That money, that number represents money being spent, projected to be spent, in the private businesses downtown.
So I guess what I would say to that, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I didn't go into further detail on this. This has all been readily available to you, but I'm sure as this body knows, the idea is for the performing arts center to be on the second floor. The first floor is actually going to be private sector and will actually be some sort of active street front, ideally a retail use, a restaurant, whatever it may be. They would be charged taxes because that's by state law, we have to assess them taxes. But that would only be about 20, that would only be about 10,000 square feet of the 30,000 square feet. So definitely prorate that, that wouldn't be the whole $50,000 figure. But I'll do one better for you. We will charge them a fair market rent on that. Say $10 for 10,000 square feet, you're looking at $100,000 on top of the taxes. So we would actually be making more money if we went in that direction. I digress, that's not why we're here tonight, to actually discuss what we're here to talk about, which is whether this is actually a good land use for the downtown. But since you brought it up, I wanted to make sure I addressed the point.
Well, just respectfully, I didn't bring it up. You brought it up, my question on your slide.
Right.
So the information's being presented to us. And I'm asking you questions about the information that's being presented to us. Not a tangential, not a tangent to anything. Just, you brought it up, I'm asking you about it.
Sure. And again, so this is just a positive economic impact analysis as to supporting why we would be going in this direction.
Okay.
I'm just curious, I've, I've heard anecdotally at least, that the Palace Theater in Manchester has a very positive economic impact. I'm just wondering if, if when Nashua was considering this, whether in the most recent feasibility study or in the past, whether they had looked at Manchester or other similar communities and assessed what the, sort of the, the impact there is, to the extent that's possible?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. And those numbers vary greatly. They're a much more well-established organization. They're suggesting, you know, northwards of $10 million is spent in their, in their Manchester downtown area with their 800-seat theater. More, more comparable, we studied a theater in Vermont. We studied a theater in Connecticut. I would suggest those would be more likened because they're multipurpose theaters. They were 500 to 700-seat type theaters. They were newer in their origins. And so those economic impact numbers were, were much less than $10 million as the Palace was, but still significant nonetheless to downtown, without question.
Thank you. Other questions?
I do.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I read the master plan and it said 1,200 people versus, what are you offering, 750?
Well, the recommendation on the feasibility study suggested a venue that could accommodate multipurpose somewhere between 500 and 700 seats. 500-ish seats if you were to do a table setting and 1,000 standing if it was an open-area type venue. That was predicated on a market analysis that was done most recently by Duncan Webb, the Performing Arts Center consultant in 2016.
Okay. Ed Weber?
Would this theater have a different venue than the Kiefer, Peacock? Have a different kind of venue?
So I just want to clarify, Keefe Auditorium or Peacock? Because Peacock uses the Court Street Theater.
Right.
And Keefe is obviously a differing theater here in the city attached to a school with a few thousand seats.
Right, and it's just, is this venue different than what you're going to be bringing in? Is it a different kind of venue that brings in?
Yes.
I did notice the, might be closely related, is the Cavalier Theater down in Medford?
Yes, I'm familiar with that. We did not study that specifically for this, but I think you could liken it to something like that.
Yeah, the other, I see the advantage, I didn't know about it, is the first floor. You're not going in just doing this, you're actually having a support from that other one.
Yes, sir.
On the first floor. So, and it does, I see that it does help the businesses in the area. If it was far out, it wouldn't be a downtown support. And there's, how much parking is in the area?
Great question. 2,500-ish parking spaces in the downtown. And specifically, why 201 Main Street is because you have line of sight from that building to the Elm Street Garage, which is very important from a retailer's perspective. And we know that it, we measured it out, it came into about 150 feet, which is very reasonable walking distance.
You might know, you might not know, is the restaurants open later than the, this would be getting out? So they would be walking from that to a restaurant?
That's the hope, that's the goal. You know, I guess if, as this conversation evolves, we would be looking to make sure that that unfolded, but I can't represent to you tonight that we've gotten that far in our conversation.
Okay. Thank you. Jim? Chairman Tenzel?
Thank you. Director Cummings, my understanding is that as well as the retail space, there's also residential space that the city would own as a result?
That's correct.
And how, how would those residences be rented out? Is it going to stay residential or would it convert to office space, something like that?
Yeah, it would, it would be something to be discussed because there's 10 apartment building, 10 apartment units in, in, in the building. With no leases and all the tenants have been notified that this is occurring and that, you know, if the city desired it, they would be looking to move out. I would suggest having a performance, Performing Arts Center underneath you. You may not be the, you know, most neighborly type of use. The city could look to use, convert those very easily into offices or administrative type uses to support the Performing Arts Center. That, that is one very easily adaptable approach. But we haven't gotten to the full design. These are concept plans in front of us that we would need to discuss as we move forward and that would definitely be a strong part of the conversation.
May I just follow up with a couple additional questions? Do you know, or can you, can you, in your, in your professional opinion, will there be any positive impact to the other property values as far as taxes coming into the city? And if so, you know, what, what percentage do you expect property values to increase downtown?
I won't articulate a percentage tonight. I'd be happy to kind of go back and look at that and make a, make a reasonable suggestion to you that, that I could pack up with, back up with data. I can tell you without question, you're going to see values increase. I mean, the case study after case study after case study will show you that when performing arts centers come into a downtown, you'll suddenly see storefronts that have been empty for many, many, many years fill up. And once that happens, not only does that bring commerce to the street, but assessments go up. You have an income approach to value. And you know that someone's net operating income is going to be much higher because of that. So you'll see it time and time again, and sales, sales of buildings in the area do increase.
Do you have one example of that, one town where that's actually happened?
So again, I don't have the numbers specifically, but I was talking to Commissioner Taylor Caswell about this specific project, and he was telling me about the Performing Arts Center that's just being, being at the very conception, it's just taking off, it's in its infancy still. And in Laconia, and there's already leases being signed for storefronts.
And if I may add to that, I'm familiar with that happening. It's an old theater that's, was in disarray. And just at the announcement that they were going to move forward to do something, a shop already moved in and was setting up there. And people were looking at it as being a very viable place for doing business. And I believe when we had the presentation at the Board of Aldermen's meeting, we also heard that in Manchester, the block where the Palace is located, they have seen more stability in terms of the shops that are there, and they've seen some increase there. And I don't know if you go up there often, but I know-
Not for a long time, but I've been up there.
Going up and down that street, it does seem like places-
Is that Hanover Street?
No, it's the next street over, and I can't think of the name. All I can think of is Warren Street, and that obviously is conquered. But that was also referenced in our presentation at the Board of Aldermen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question has to do with, you cited two documents. In 2002, the Performing Arts Center study talked about having it downtown. And in 2003, Mass, Downtown Master Plan sized it, said it should be so many seats because of neighboring communities having similar facilities and I guess had to do what the market would be. And then right after you said that, you're pretty confident that those sentiments still prevail today. So those conditions, were those reviewed by Duncan Webb?
Yes. And feasibility study, I'm pretty sure your downtown master plan study also suggested a similar seat size range, between 500 and 700 seats. I think the most recent feasibility study suggested something in the range of between 500 and 800 seats. You know, that, that range was a very comfortable recommendation back then, still now today. And even going through the process, I heard Duncan Webb make comments along the way that you don't want something too large because you won't be able to fill it. The seats will be dark, it will become a drain on you, and you won't be able to support the asset. So, you know, overbuilding is not something that's recommended in this specific type of circumstance.
Now, also, the old study recommended the current Court Street Theater as the site. Would it have aired in doing so then, because now we know that it's too small?
One could suggest that.
Okay.
Yep. And it lacks the Main Street visibility, a direct connection to parking, and also the positive economic impact that could occur with generating revenue right onto Main Street.
Mr. Peterson?
At the Board of Aldermen meeting, one of the speakers talked about fire safety concerns with how many stairwells and the access to them for people leaving the building. Has that matter been resolved and put to rest so that everybody's, the fire department is happy with the solution?
Yes. Again, these are concept plans, meet code. When this actually gets to a design stage, I can assure you, they will meet code and meet the fire marshal's satisfaction as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Rupucci?
Sir Pucci?
Of the theaters that you guys looked at while investigating this, what's the number of shows that they did, whether it was calc, whether it was summarized, weekly, monthly, or yearly? How many revenue generating dates were there in those places?
Quite a few. Most of the venues we looked at had a stable, within their first three to five years of being active or used, a minimum of three, three to four days a week. And we would be looking for a similar type concept for this. The Palace Theater in and of itself, I believe, used three hundred and twenty-five days a year, something to that, something along those lines. So it is used regularly, you know, very often. We wouldn't necessarily get to that point, we would have to grow there, but all the feedback we've gotten thus far is we would be able to do that.
Did any of the places that you looked at have tenants above, in, below the theaters? Like, I haven't been to the Palace Theater in a long time, but I think that's just a regular theater. I don't think there's anything underneath it or above it. I think it take, there might be something above it, but it takes, you walk into it, it's like the old cinemas used to be. This isn't like that. Were any of those places similar to what you're proposing?
So Manchester's Palace Theater does have office uses above it.
Above it, right.
And adjacent to it, to the side of it, there is restaurants and bars on either side of it. And so, yes, to answer your question, that is something that we looked at, we know that we would have to accommodate the uses underneath us, and so, an active retail, a restaurant, something like that, we would, we would be working toward that, and that's readily practiced and wouldn't be a problem. Residential above us, that, again, I would raise as something that we would want to further investigate, and I don't think I would make a recommendation to the, to the steering committee that's charged with the design to maintain those as residential units.
Just a couple more. Did, was the auditorium at Elm Street ever looked at and considered to be an op, an option? That's one question. And the second question would be, did the city, since that 2002 study, has the city ever purchased land for this purpose since then for arts building?
So I have other City Hall staff in the room that could speak to this with their institutional memory, but I'm pretty sure the city has never purchased land for this specific use.
Okay.
I can be corrected if I'm wrong. But then, secondly, Keefe was looked at very early on and was ruled out very early on. You'd lose the economic impact if you were to put it that far outside of your Main Street corridor. Plus, it is attached to a school, you would not achieve what we are talking about in terms of the performances with its current setup. And then, thirdly, you're talking about seating that is much larger than what actually can be accommodated in our marketplace.
And no parking?
Yeah.
There's no place to park.
To the symphony.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Hold on, Ms. Golda?
Yeah, if I may just comment, Director Cummings, if you don't mind. We looked at Keefe, and we had discussions about Keefe, and I think when people talk about theaters, you look at the stage and you look at the seats, but the other piece to be considered when we talk about shows is what the back of the house is like and what they can accommodate. Because at one point, someone even mentioned the high schools, but we don't have deep stages and getting sets in, and, you know, if you've got a traveling show coming in, what can you accommodate? And so, in looking at the total building, that was the other aspect that we were talking about. And in looking at the Main Street building, we discussed how there is access from the back that would allow for easy access and to get, you know, with an elevator to get things upstairs. The other thing I'd just like to mention, in talking about shows, in looking at what theaters of this size do for programming, this size really allows us to nicely do some smaller, more intimate things, like lecture series and book series and humanities council programming that might be too big for something at the library, but something that might have a regional attraction for Southern New Hampshire. So this size really lends itself to a more intimate feeling than having those dark seats at Elm Street when you want to do something like that, in addition to it being economical. And I think if any of you have ever gone to a show and you've walked in and the theater's maybe even half full, and then you look and the balcony's empty, you're like, what am I doing here? And if you went to the symphony last Saturday, the place was mobbed, and, you know, and talking to people who went, they were like, it was wonderful, and there were so many people there. So I think the size, it's that balance between what's economical, what will get us the shows we're trying to attract, and what will also give an intimate feeling when you're there with six hundred of your best friends. But you still feel like you're part of something that's happening. But I think the definition of show, you really need to think beyond music and performance, but there are other options for programming in this type of venue.
Do you know the elev, the ability to get to that second floor? Does that already exist in that building?
It does with the elevator.
The elevators are already there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I would just say, if you've never been in that building, it's a very interesting building. The owner gave me a tour one day several years ago, and I was just amazed. Not being a native of Nashua, I had no memory of what it looked like, and it's a pretty amazing building.
Mr. Chairman, Tim, I know you're in charge of municipal parking in the city, so you could answer this one. We're counting on the Elm Street Garage as the primary place to park for the arts center. Are there plans, I should preface this, I say, I still hear complaints from residents about the garage not being attractive enough, not being, you know, it doesn't appear to be as secure enough. Are there plans to do anything with the garage?
So I think the first thing that we could do is bring more people to our downtown. That in and of itself will start to create some vibrancy. It's not because it's not an unsafe area. I mean, we're one of the safest cities, not in the state, but in the country. I think Wallet Hub just ranked us as number one safest city in the nation. But you typically get that feeling of being uncomfortable when you're alone, you get that anxiety. So bringing people to the downtown will help, help assuage some of those concerns. This type of anchor would definitely work towards that. The garages itself, I think we all recognize, you know, they could be touched up a little bit with some lighting and some other maintenance type issues. They're definitely on our radar, and we'd be looking to address that with this, not with this specific investment, but definitely within investing in the downtown in the near But the occupancy, it can accommodate this use. I mean, we know that the garages are underutilized, especially in the evening, and we would be able to, in the Elm Street Garage specifically in the evening, and the High Street Garage, you know, we'd be able to accommodate this, this type of use from a parking perspective.
Director Cummings?
If I may? Yes, please, go ahead.
To follow up on the question regarding parking, one of the other things we've heard is the concern over handicap parking. And my response has been, I think we have the ability to take spaces and for the night of a performance, just bag meters or marked spaces to provide additional handicap parking, much as they do at the Verizon when they have graduations and they have a different need than when they have a hockey game. So you are in agreement with that, that we would be able to do that?
Yes, absolutely. Similarly, what we do right now with weddings and funerals, we bag when necessary to accommodate the special occasion. We could accommodate, you know, in some sort of arrangement, you know, someone's needs if they had a disability, that would, that definitely would be a priority for us. Behind the theater itself, you have an access road to the garage with a lot of handicap parking, and you'd be very close proximity to the door from there, and we could look at that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you very much.
May I ask one more?
Oh, sorry, yes, please.
Director Cummings, I've asked you this before, I've asked Alderman McCarty this before, but just, you know, from the land use perspective, can you talk about the importance of investing in downtown and making sure that downtown is vibrant for the city for years and decades to come, and why that's such a focus for an economic development director?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and the planning staff is here too, and they could speak to this even probably better than I could. What we all know is your downtown of yesterday is never going to be. You know, I think Nashua was somewhat blessed to have one of your longest retailers as an anchor on a Main Street. You know, Sears vacated Main Street a long time ago in a lot of cities across the country. We were very fortunate to have a retailer hang in there for as long as they did. You are not going to see another retailer backfill into that space. The market's just changed too much. So some really smart people have studied this issue, and I just put up the slide that shows this. These are some really good books out there that talk about this in terms of how you turn around your downtown, and focusing on culture, arts, and your heritage, and making it a destination are all strategies that have proven to be very successful for your downtown redevelopment. And so I would suggest we would be just adopting something that has already been done time and time again. So that's why this land use in your downtown is so very important, and why I would even feel comfortable recommending a fifteen and a half million dollar bond for this. I mean, if this was out along Amherst Street, or if this was along Daniel Webster, I would suggest it's a private sector play, and I would not recommend going down this, down this path, because the market should be able to support it on its own. But the reality is, is the market can't support theaters first, first of all. Secondly, if you are going to make the investment, you need to do it in a place where you'll see positive economic impact and where you'll do the best for your community, and that has been proven to be your downtown.
Sir Webber? One point to add on to that, a number of apartment complexes have come to the downtown area, and this only feeds what we're trying to establish is a walking instead of a driving neighborhood. And so Franklin, there was one right next to Southern New Hampshire, it's an apartment complex that actually doesn't have car parking. People are there understanding that they're going to walk or be bused to their locations. And so this is why we're now getting a walking or municipal riding to this area, and it's being fad, actually, and it is viable, and if you walk down Main Street, that's what you see, walking people, lots of walking people, and they need this center so they can walk, because that's what they're looking for. They want this, so.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Cummings, please.
How are we doing on raising the four million dollars?
Well, we haven't started that yet. We're, that is going to be one of the very next tasks if the city desires to go in this direction, that we would be looking to pursue. That will be over the very next, along with design, fundraising, and further, further sketching out the operational plan, the strategic plan for this facility. The feasibility study made some recommendations and gave some broad strokes direction as to how it should be done, but, you know, drilling down into further detail is all going to be the charge of the steering committee when this, when and if this moves forward.
The four million dollars is a trigger for initiating other actions as well, as I understand it.
Relative to construction.
Starting the project, getting the fifteen point five million dollars.
Not getting the fifteen point five million dollars. That would be available, because you need the two million dollars to acquire the building, and then you'd be, basically be held in a holding position while you're raising the four million dollars, after you raise the four million dollars, the start of the construction.
So the process is approve a bond to get the two million dollars?
Approve the bond to get the fifteen and a half million dollars, which can't be.
Of which the two million dollars will become, so it's a phased program.
Correct.
To get the fifteen point five million dollars.
Correct.
So once you buy the building, then it's a delay in pursuing further before doing anything significant, based on the fact that the four million dollars will be raised, so that's a trigger to initiate further.
Correct.
City investment.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Just to follow up on Mr. Weber's comment, last, I want to, last year in the fall, I'm sure many of you heard about the Americans for the Arts Study, and it talked about economic impact. And there was a meeting one evening out at La Belle Winery, and Commissioner Caswell from the governor's office, he's our commissioner of business and economic affairs, was there. And after the presentation, several of us were having conversation with him, and people were talking about what was happening in downtown, and specifically, there was conversation about downtown Nashua. And his comment, which I think is a very interesting one, is that downtowns are becoming, what he described as the living room of a community. And I think it goes to your point of people coming here and living downtown, and where do they go to get together? And as we bring more people in who move in who aren't from Nashua, how do they get to know each other, and where do they go to meet each other and form relationships, and ultimately, maybe end up sitting around this table because they become truly invested in our community? And in looking at the use of this space, it will certainly provide an opportunity for people to get together in terms of the options of community programming it provides, as well as the fact that it will provide ongoing retail space at that ground floor level. So we will continue to have that sense of our Main Street, and yet provide other opportunities for the community to come together, and for people who have different interests to meet together. Some of you have heard me say this before, but as I look around our community, we have Stellows, we have Mine Falls, we have Brili Park, we have Conway, we have Holman, and we have Court Street, which is two hundred and fifty seats, and we have the much larger Keefe Auditorium. But in terms of a property that gives us the opportunity to have smaller and maybe more affordable performances and activities in the community, that's what we're missing. And so, from a land use perspective and looking at the location and what we hope to achieve for our downtown and for our community in general, this seems to make sense, because I think all of us, even if we don't come downtown all the time, we know that people, when they move here, drive through Main Street to see what it looks like. I know I certainly did, and was told it's good I wasn't looking two years earlier because I wouldn't have moved here. So I think that it's, it is about downtown, but it's about the city of Nashua and forming community and providing venues for people with other interests.
One more, two more things, actually.
One more, two more things, actually. Questions for Mr. Cummings or?
Have you, have you looked into the grant system of the state and federal for availability for this?
Yes. I, I can speak further to that if you'd like.
Please.
So, but I, with that caveat being said, I do not want to muddy or confuse the issue. I want to be abundantly clear. I would not want one to walk away and think that you could lower the bond amount from fifteen and a half million based on alternative funding sources. I, I would suggest we would need to have the concrete understanding that the city was behind this, and then we would look to possibly not borrow as much money should we be successful in achieving alternative funding sources. I've spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks looking at what's referred to as a new market tax credit. It's one I suggested very early on at a P E D C meeting back in the summer of 2016. And I still think today it would be very applicable to this project, and that could potentially bring in conservatively a couple million dollars. There's historic tax credits that we could look at as well. Then at the state level, there's what's referred to as a C D F A tax credit, and I would shy away from going down that direction because I would like to leave that available to the four million people who would be looking to raise the four million dollars because I think that would be a good tool for them to have, and I wouldn't want it to be applied to the capital end of the project. But to bring my answer full circle, you know, I think we could, from alternative fundraising, I'm sorry, alternative revenue type raising, we would be looking at, I'd say right now, two, two, two and a half million dollars.
My second item, and I've discussed this in the past, this last year I was privy to a D O T study at the National Regional Planning Commission, and one of the big stipulations of more cities and towns across the United States, young people are going to places and living at places where there's, they walk to, where they can take transportation and they can bike. And one of the things that New Hampshire is looking to do is to get more young people up here to take away from our growing older population, and they won't come unless there's something for them here other than a job. They want to have places to go that are quality and not just go out and eat. They want to have a, a place to stay. So if we want to have young people infusion into our community, we need something, a reason for them to come and live here, and this would be one of them.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, to that point, and, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, we have one of our largest employers that wants to hire a thousand employees over the next year or two, a thousand new bodies. They are competing for that talent very aggressively, and they have told us that an amenity like this will only help them attract the talent that they need. And we want to make sure that we keep them here because they're a national or global company, and they're making their decisions on where they want to invest based off of where they have access to talent. And we very much know that they could make a strategic decision to roll out a new line or a new project in Texas or California or, or Georgia or wherever the case may be and not here. And ultimately, that's the biggest reason why this is an economic development project.
Mr. Cussey?
Yeah. What if they can't raise the four million bucks? What happens then?
Well, I, I, that's a great question. We could do a couple of things. I mean, my very first response to you is we could sell it.
And is that, you guys have looked at, I mean, I don't really, I don't know the value of commercial real estate to any great depth, but do you feel like if you're not getting a good deal on the building, at least you're close? You might take a hit if you sell it, but you can get out of it.
Yeah. So if I may, Mr. Chairman, I do know real estate, commercial real estate values very well. I can tell you without question that the city is getting a deal on this, and, and we would be coming out ahead if we were ever in that position.
How long will you wait for that four million dollars to be raised? At, at what point do you turn around and say, "The building's been sitting there empty for a year or two years or three years"?
It's specified in the, the resolution itself. Correct. So in the resolution, it says that there's essentially a sunset period where we have to raise it by.
Which is what?
I would say two years off the top of my head.
About two years, yeah, that's what my recollection.
So that, but with that being said, you know, this is one of the highest priorities for the administration, and I would think for the city overall, the, the public just came up and voted this project. I think we will all be working as a team to try to make sure we, you know, bring the four million dollars in as quickly as possible. And the biggest reason why, from my perspective, is because all of our construction cost numbers become stale as they drag on. And so this project will increase if we don't bring that four million dollars in, and that's very much in the back of my mind to make this all work. So we, we know we have to, you know, work in a direction to get this done as quickly as possible. Time is of the essence. That, that fact is not lost on me.
With this, just a thought.
Should I sit down?
No. With this, the major business that you were talking about, in some theaters, they have naming rights and they give a, a, a big donation to have naming rights. Have you, does that enter your mind as far as the?
Without question.
Okay.
Yeah, without question. But no commitments have been given thus far, and I can tell you that the expert advice that we've gotten is that we should be looking approximately to assess the naming rights as twenty to twenty-five percent of the value of our, of our capital campaign. So roughly a million dollars is what the value should be that we should be looking at raising. I don't know if we'll get there here in New England, but I know Verizon, the Verizon Center just recently set a good comp for us that we would be looking at.
Other questions for Mr. Cummings?
Well, with that being said, I hope that you will vote favorably on this tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak to this? Alderman McCarthy?
Thank you. For the record, Brian McCarthy, 65 Musket Drive and president of the Board of Alderman. I've been involved in this project for a number of years, and I think Director Cummings covered most of it, so I'll be brief. If you have a look at the master plan, it has always suggested that we needed to do the Performing Arts Center. The number that was suggested in there was substantially larger, but remember that master plans are just that and that as you get to implementing them, you take into account what the actual market conditions are that, and, and what will be supported. So the studies that we've done have all supported a number that, that was 520 years ago and is 700 now. And I think, you know, those show you that that's the number. When you look at, at Mr. Webb's study, I mean, he went out and did an analysis of, of what's in, what our market is, how far we can draw people from, and came to that conclusion. So I believe it's the right size facility, and I believe that 201 Main is the best place to put it because that is, the master plan will tell you that the hundred percent corner is Kinsley or is West Hollis and Main. I don't think that's actually true anymore, and I think the reason for that has to do with the encroachment from a hospital up towards the center of town. I think if you look at the, at the Pearl Street intersection, that is more the real center of the city and the conditions that exist now than, than what was anticipated when the master plan was written. So I think this is a, this is a good place. The parking issue is pretty much resolved between, I mean, there's, if you have 700 seats, you would expect 350 cars. There are 600 spaces 150 feet away in the Elm Street Garage. There are another 400 spaces in case that one's full at High Street, which is a fairly short walk. It's a shorter walk than getting to the mall from your car in most cases. So, you know, I think that issue is resolved. In terms of the benefits to the city, as was pointed out, we assess commercial real estates basically by what amount of money they can make. And restaurants make money when people come in the door, and the more people walk by, the more people come in, the more people buy, and the more the property is worth, then worth that the restaurant sits on. And I think that's a, a lot of the effect that we anticipate, and that's exactly what we've seen. I went up to visit the Palace Theater last week. There is a restaurant directly across the street that has just been renovated at the cost of some three million dollars, and I don't think that building was worth three million dollars last year. So, you know, you will see that, that property is reassessed and is paying more taxes, and the owner went in and said, "I'll make the three million dollar investment. I'll commit to paying those taxes because I know that with that asset there, I'm going to be able to make that back in my business." So I think we have a, a very good picture of what it looks like, you know, in terms of, of the economics. There's a lot of details to sort out about the building. We had to sort out the fire issues. Fire department's not going to let us not address those. We're going to have to put in elevators, and we're going to have to do all of that stuff. That'll all get sorted out when the site plan is developed and the, and the plan for the building is done. In all, I think it's a, it's a very good project that will be of long-term lasting benefit. I think as you've, as you've heard and as I'm sure you all realize, retail as we know, as we've known it over the last 50 years, is not coming back in this country to the way it was unless we start putting, you know, Amazon kiosks on the corners in downtown, and I doubt those would get much use either. So we, we have to find a different way to power our downtown, and that is through this kind of cultural connection which we're seeing everywhere. And I'll just, I'll leave you with short anecdotal evidence. Over the, over the summer, I went down to Tennessee to watch the eclipse. We wound up in a town called Cookeville, Tennessee. So we were at the hotel and said, "Well, let's go into town and see what we can find for dinner." So we drive in. It's a great place that you can't get into. This is a town of 35,000 people, by the way, that's basically in the middle of nowhere, so they have a market of probably 40,000 people. And we went to the restaurant, we, we went back the next night to go to, to go there and we'd gone to another place. While we're driving around downtown, I happened to drive by the Cookeville Center for the Performing Arts. So I looked it up. These people built a 450-seat theater in a town of fifty, of 35,000 people in 1979 and have operated it continuously ever since. If they can do that in the middle of Tennessee, in a, in a fairly sparse populated area, in a town that's got a market of 200 to 250,000 people within, within 50 miles, we most certainly can make this work. I think you're going to see that it will be professionally managed, there'll be a lot of acts. Mr. Ramsey from the Palace Theater said he thought that the numbers we have for the number of shows were, were probably low in terms of what he would expect it to perform as. And, and by the way, he, he looks at this as, as a wonderful thing for all of us. He doesn't look at it as competition. He came the other night and encouraged us to approve this project because it will enhance the project, the arts as a whole in Southern New Hampshire, and that's good for us, it's good for them, it's good for everybody. I encourage you to approve the location. I think it's the best place we can pit this.
Mr. Alderman McCarthy, thank you for coming. You're going to answer some questions for me, I hope, or at least make things a little bit clearer for me. Now, I, I get what's going on, and I think it's a good plan in general. I don't, conceptually, I think it's a great plan. Whether or not that particular building works for the way that it is, I'm, I'm kind of not sold on. But one of the things that I get confused, sitting on this board, is that Mr. Kelly chairs the, the board...
C I C.
The C I C, okay? So I, as not being involved in that personally, I kind of step back and they do the work and they look at what the priorities should be in the city and how they rank, where money should be spent. And as a layperson to that, I basically sit here, even though I'm a voting member of the planning board, I sit here and say, "I'm going to take, unless somebody has some substantial information that alters what they recommend, I'm going to look at them like they're kind of the professionals in this area, and they've put the effort in and they've come up with this recommendation." So what confuses the hell out of me, and this is not the first time, it's other things too, is when they set a priority on a project way lower than other things. So I, I kind of sit here and say, "It's not like I think this is a bad idea," but I look at, that committee had recommendations that, that money would be better spent or there are higher priorities in the city to spend that money on. So just from your point of view, and really, this is not a loaded question, hopefully it will be educational, am I looking at it wrong to say the way they set the priorities should drive us, or does it drive you?
My answer will be a little bit long.
That's okay.
I spent the first 18 years I was on the Board of Alderman as the liaison to the Capital Improvements Committee as a voting member of the committee. And I want to start by saying this. New Hampshire structures its government around two, around towns of 2,000 farmers who don't trust each other. You read the RSA's, that is the, the entire target for the way local government is structured in New Hampshire. We're not that. We're a city of 86,000 people with a, with a large full-time staff and with a legislative body and representative government. No, and, and I'm not taking anything away from the work done by the Capital Improvements Committee, but their work is done in a vacuum. It's three members of the public, a few members of the staff, and one member of the Board of Alderman who meet three nights for three hours and then prioritize the projects for the next year. Because the, and, and we only do it that way because that is what RSA 674 prescribes in terms of how the Capital Improvements Plan is done. In theory, nothing should ever go to the Capital Improvements Plan Committee for the first time that isn't six years away. That's the way the plan works. It's supposed to be on the plan for six years before you build it. So it's really tough for anybody to respond in real time to changing events in the community under those circumstances. And this is, this is an opportunity that we have to move on. And bear, bear in mind, you know, the, the, if you look at the towns, they're very slow to act because they have to wait for a town meeting and get the thing on the warrant and, and deal that way. The city is much more responsive as things change to doing things. It's, it's up to the Board of Alderman to understand where the money's going to get spent. I'll, I'll just tell you from the amount of time that I've spent on this, on this project. It's, it, it is more time than the Capital Improvements Committee gets to analyze projects in the course of a couple of years. So what you get from them is a, is a sort of back-of-the-envelope prioritization of the projects. And I think in many cases, it's, it's a reasonably good one. When we say, "Is this sidewalk more important than this sidewalk?", that's pretty easy to tell, you know? Anybody who lives here can say, "Well, there's a lot more people on that street, and there's a school at the end of it, and the other one isn't as important," and that sort of thing. In a lot of these projects, it just requires a lot more thought and a lot more understanding of the overall priorities and the overall workings of the city in terms of, you know, economic feedback loops and that sort of stuff. So I think you'll see, somebody might look at this and say, "Why do I want to build a theater for 15 million dollars?"" Well, I, I can tell you, I would ask the same question about parks. Why do we build parks? We build them for recreation. They don't actually, even actually have the economic development benefits that the Performing Arts Center would have. They're just basically empty space that we allow for people to play in, if you want to get right down to it. And they're expensive. Greeley Park probably worth 30 million dollars on the open market because it's, you know, 80 acres of, of four-unit-per-acre developable land. We keep it because it's important to the citizens of Nashua. I think the, the beauty of the Performing Arts Center is it's important to the entertainment and recreation of the city of Nashua, and it helps to stimulate the economy of the city of Nashua at the same time. So I think there's a lot of benefit to it there that you may not see if you, if you sit through an hour-long presentation or a 15-minute presentation on, "Here's what we're going to do and here's how much it costs." So I'm, I'm not, you know, I, I think the Capital Improvements Committee doesn't, does a... You know, I think the Capital Improvements Committee does a good job of what it does, but it's not the entirety of how we do planning for those kinds of projects in the city. I agree with you on some of it. First year I was on there, moving the Lake Street Fire Station had been the top-rated project for 13 years in a row and hadn't been done, hadn't even been proposed. And that was one of the first things I fought to get done, which kind of kicked a roadblock out from in front of our infrastructure development. What used to be capital improvement submissions that were this big are now like that for the year because we did a lot of catch-up on the infrastructure over the last two decades. But I think, you know, in this particular case, there's often some projects where the kind of long-term forward-looking of the administration doesn't jive with what you might think if you just look at the way the conditions are now. And I think this is one of those projects.
Thank you. All good.
Any last questions with Alderman?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Discussion? Comments? Questions? Mr. Webber?
I think we also need to look at cities and towns that don't have this kind of a infrastructure in their cities and ones that do. And I think ones that don't become the cities and towns become a desert. They don't have anything for their citizens to go to and this would be quite a great improvement, not only just for the people, but for the businesses around that. It'll be a big improvement for that. I think we need to look at the very positive things that this is going to do for the city and why we need this. Because of the young people or the people that are going to be coming into our town, they almost demand what they... You know, they're demanding something more than just going out and eating. And I think we need to look at that. Kind of a funny little thing. I was looking... I mentioned the theater in Medford. I was looking at it online and they don't just have performances. They actually have Joe Biden coming there and speaking. So, it's a diversity type of thing that comes to these. It's not just plays, plays, plays. There's a diversity of things that come to the different theaters and so there's different things that are coming. It's not just plays. I thought that was... It seemed odd to me, but it's very understanding after you look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you. I mean, I think this is a really good and important opportunity for the city and I would personally be, you know, disappointed if the city missed out on this opportunity. I thought Alderman McCarthy's comparison to, you know, to parks was really apt. I mean, to me, this is in large part, you know, I look at it as sort of a public good and, you know, part of the reason why as a city we consider this is because of the cultural benefit it has and, you know, just the enrichment of the experience for our residents. But, you know, this does have the advantage too of the economic benefits, which I think is just, you know, sort of, it's a plus that, you know, some other public goods don't have attached to them. You know, and I think some very legitimate questions were raised last time about, you know, sort of not having had the opportunity to really consider the background behind this proposal and in particular, why we were looking at this specific location. And, you know, given that our fairly limited role in this process is specifically to look at, you know, should the city purchase this particular property, you know, to this end, I think it was important that we had, you know, this discussion tonight and had, you know, the really helpful background from Mr. Cummings and Alderman McCarthy, not to mention all the materials that we received in the interim. And I think, you know, everything I've heard tonight suggests that this is the right location. So, certainly, with all that said, I would be in favor of, you know, offering a favorable recommendation.
Mr. Peterson?
One thing I'd like to point out is we talked about the timeframe for the $4 million and the naming rights. And in the report provided by Mr. Webb's organization, it gives like a roadmap of the plan of what's going to happen when. So, if you want to know the sequence of events, I think the plan matches everything that was discussed tonight. It's a handy reference to know what the development process is for this project in Mr. Webb's report.
Thank you. Mr. Pucci?
Yeah, I'll support... I'll be in support of it. I generally think it's the decision of the Board of Alderman to decide whether or not this is the right place for it and if it's a good idea. Looking at it from the planning board's point of view, I don't think it's... I think there are a lot of problems with it. But the solution to those problems is really in the process of how we get to things, not something our board can just decide on. I can't imagine a theater with tenants below it. I can't really imagine that. When they turn around and say, "Well, we'll have to put elevators in and the fire department has concerns and we'll work that out." Anybody who's built a building, you know, how much real estate in a building does a staircase take, does an elevator take? Those can be huge impact things that if I were to look, get involved in whether or not this is viable, I would have a hard time saying I think it's going to be. But I think the city's trying to do the right thing and under the circumstances we face, this is the best alternative. So, I will say, if the Board of Alderman decided to do this, I think this is going to get built whether they raise $4 million or not. I don't think... I would feel a lot better about it if they were just saying, "Okay, we're going to spend this money and build it. Is it a good idea or not?" All that $4 million to me is going to do is make it sit there for a period of time before they get going on it because at some point, they're going to turn around and say, "We're into this now. Do we bail it out with more money if we need to do that?" That's what would happen. That's what happens, in my view, on every public project that's ever been done. So, this is going to get built. I have no doubt about it. It might cost taxpayers more money. Not really my place to say one way or the other. But I think... I feel a lot better saying I support it because I think the people who are behind it have put a lot of effort into it and developed a lot of information to help them make that decision. I don't necessarily agree with that decision, but they've done their enough work for me to sit here and say, "Yep, I think they've done their due diligence and let's give it a shot from a planning point of view." It bugs the hell out of me that we're getting quoted from plans that are 16 years old. Well, you know, 16 years ago, somebody thought it was a good idea to do this down here. That's just crazy to me that we do business that way. But that's the world we live in. So, now that I've got everybody mad at me who supports it and opposes it, I'm going to say I'll support it. I agree with that.
Well, let me suggest that, following up on what he said, I too support it and I would like to make a recommendation that we vote to support it and make a recommendation to the Board of Alderman that we do support it.
Is that a motion?
Hey!
I'll second Mr. Kelly's motion.
All right. So, favorable motion... Sorry. Motion by Mr. Kelly to make a favorable recommendation on R-18-002. And that motion has been seconded by Mr. Pucci. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes.
Unanimously.
Yeah.
Jared, just to give you an idea...
Do you want to bother coming back up?
Really, really easy.
Just wrap it up.
And a small footprint for... You actually have to have two different...
Any discussion items? Mr. Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to thank the planning staff for all the information that was provided as a result of our getting a little cranky at the last meeting and it was very helpful. As always, the staff has done a wonderful, wonderful job supporting it.
I'd like to second that, too.
Absolutely. Very informative.
One quick item, Mr. Chair.
We have, I think if we're past that phase, we can have our chair come back.
I offered for him to come back.
Oh, you guys don't want to?
I figured we'd... At this point, didn't.
So, Mr. Chair, there was some discussion on the Capital Improvements Committee's procedures and apparently it's an annual thing. It takes some effort and normally, most people aren't really pleased with the results because the peers and Mr. Kelly will be bringing it to us maybe in the next...
About the end of the month.
Excuse me. About the end of the month. His recommendations, maybe it's something... We don't see it too often. Once a year, we see the recommendations we vote and then we see project IDs come and be for us, for us, for input. But maybe we should talk about the CIC process governed by the, I think it's RSA 674 that's quoted and see if there's any ways that we can make some improvements to the recommendations are more acceptable.
Well, I've already recommended for one thing to change the format. Secondly, this year, we've got priorities established by the mayor, which we didn't have before. Most mayors aren't reluctant to show their hand too early. And the third thing is that we've made recommendations that every project that comes before us, every, I should say, division and what have you, to make the recommendation on what's their number-one priority. In the past, we selected their priorities and the attitude is, at least mine, is if you... Who knows their business better than them? So, they come forward and explain in great detail what their priorities are and why it is that priority. And thirdly, how are you going to pay for it? I want each division and authority and department to understand that there's a process that we have to go to. And just because you say that's your number-one priority, start thinking about how is it going to be paid for? It can't be on the taxes every time. Think in terms of recommending a public-private partnership and who we ought to be partnering with. And that's a process that began this year. So, we are trying to make recommendations and change the process.
Mr. Kelly, I'm back to you for the... Be honest.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second your adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned at 8:23.